Okay, so we've spent the last two weeks with Task Force, which is a group of about forty-five or so community members, parents, teachers, staff members, students from around our community, talking about safety, talking about this pandemic, talking about the need to start as soon as possible, to start as efficiently as possible, to maintain instructional integrity, all those things, and really got a lot of good feedback. Every day we'd ask for comments and we had a program we used where people could submit their comments and their questions. And we took those questions and shared them with administrators. And we've been with administrators the last three days, talking about plans related to elementary and middle school and high school, and talking about the safety processes. And we shared with you a plan that's about thirty-five, thirty-nine pages long or so, that has kind of everything we're thinking about related to this road back, this road back to school and what that could look like. One thing I want to start with is, this is strictly a plan. It is a plan that's meant to be changed and adjusted. One word that I've used continuously throughout this process is nimble. It has to be, anything we do has to be flexible. We have to be able to teach face-to-face one day and remote the next day and not misspeak. We have to be able to work with our students, depending upon whether we see them or whether we don't see them, because they're going to have to have the same learning objectives, whether we're talking to them face-to-face or whether they're online. And so we've really got a lot of good feedback from everybody. All the safety procedures that are in place are, I think, are going to be pretty good. A couple of things we know that we have to do. The state of Texas said we have to offer face-to-face instruction every day for students that want it. And the only adjustment we can make there is at high school, we have to offer a face-to-face option, but it doesn't have to be every day. We could have a staggered schedule of some sort. We could have A days and B days or different things like that at the high school level. But eighth grade on down, we have to have a face-to-face option every day for students. We're starting school August twentieth. We have an option to start school online for four weeks. And then if the board approved, we could go on additional four weeks. So we could start school online for eight weeks if we wanted to. And we've chosen not to do that at this point, because doing that would require distributing Chromebooks to students. And we still have eighteen hundred students or so, at least, that do not have internet access. We were working with the state of Texas right now on a CARES Act funds where we've requested two thousand MiFis. And the state will pay half of those and we'll pay for half of them. And so that's a pretty good deal. We'll be bringing that, all that information to you at our scheduled workshop on the eleventh. And we're trying to get that set up right now and get all that ordered and get moving on that, because we really can't wait for some of those things to happen. So that way, if students do have to be at home learning, they will have one of our devices and they will have Verizon MiFi in order to do that. But again, we won't have those for the start of school. And so we've chosen to go ahead and start face-to-face. And we'll do that as well as we can. And parents are going to have to make a choice. This plan will be released tomorrow. And so it'll be out over the weekend and it will be out next week. And we're going to advertise it as much as we can. All the stations are waiting to talk about it and reveal the plan. I think we even have some Facebook Live going on right now related to our meeting here in this plan. And so we are excited to share this with everybody, because I think this terrifying ambiguity is really starting to wear on people and I get that. We have released the plan tomorrow. By the sixth, parents will have to make a choice. Parents will have to make a choice by the sixth as to whether they're going to keep their child at home or send their child to school. And we have to know that, because that's going to be, that decision is going to be very contingent upon, or is going to help us then decide what kind of instructional options we're going to be able to offer for elementary students. Secondary students, high school students, middle school students, it's really not a lot of difference there, because those students are pretty much so able to monitor themselves and do all the things we need them to do independently of their parents, where elementary students are going to require more parental help, especially if they choose the at-home option for their students. And so our instructional plans will change depending upon the number of students that decide to come back to school face-to-face for those that choose the at-home option. With the plans that we have, parents will make a choice by the sixth. If we don't hear from parents by the sixth, we will be getting a phone call you and saying, okay, what option do you choose? Because we have to know that. And that will give us, from the sixth to the twentieth, that'll give us two weeks to figure out exactly where students will be and how that's going to work and what students are assigned to what teachers and what classrooms. If we have to have more online teachers, if that's an option, or if we have to have blended classrooms, that'll be an option as well. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about specifics related to instructional models. And I have about five or six slides or so, maybe a few more. And then I'll answer any questions you have. We can talk about the safety part of this if you want or whatever you're interested in talking about. But let's talk about the instructional models. The goal is to, whatever we do, is we want, we have the exact same expectations for our students that are face-to-face as we have for our students that are remote. So all students have the option of choosing those. And those forms will be sent out to parents next week on Monday. If you choose the face-to-face option, and we really don't have a number in line as far as those that might come face-to-face, back when we did our survey, ended July fifth. And so you know that before July fifth, we really hadn't had a big spike in Wichita Falls. And so it's probably changed since then. But when the survey ended July fifth, we had about twenty percent of our parents that were going to choose the at-home option and about eighty percent of our parents that were considering the face-to-face option. I think that number's probably gone up a little bit on the at-home option. So I think it's probably more than twenty percent. But should you choose the face-to-face option, we will have in-class, in-person instruction, five days a week. And we have safety measures. We've spent a lot of time with Wichita County Health Department. And so our director and everything and members of that team, the safety team and the health team, have been working on those safety measures. And they're in line with all the state and federal guidelines that we have that are out there right now. And so in this setting, teachers are going to have face-to-face instruction using Google Classroom. Everything we do, pre-K through twelve, will be run through Google Classroom. Students will be trained, will be working on that as soon as they get back face-to-face. So that way, in case there's a quarantine for any period of time for a face-to-face student, they know how to use it. We have online videos for parents for resources using Google Classroom for those students that choose the remote option. But Google Classroom is going to be our learning management system. Everything's going to run through there. Teachers will plan instruction. So that way, if for some reason a student is here today face-to-face and tomorrow is not feeling well and is at home, they can easily transfer back and forward from face-to-face to remote instruction, especially if we have temporary school closures related to this pandemic and how it goes. We have district-directed safety procedures and state-directed safety procedures. But we do not, but we have a lot of options or a lot of leeway for campuses. Okay, so I'm reading some of your comments. Do you not see the WFISD face-to-face page?
I do. I'm asking what, where is it? In what page is it in the presentation at the center?
Okay, no, this is a presentation, you don't have a copy.
Oh, so it's not part of the book?
Yes, you have a full one. So teachers will plan instruction face-to-face and remotely if they have to. District directed, so we have district and state guidelines as far as safety procedures that have to be followed. But each campus has the ability to adjust those based on their campus. Some campuses have restrooms that are inside, have sinks that are inside restrooms. Other campuses have sinks that are outside the restrooms in common areas. And so there's definitely different procedures that go there. Some campuses have larger classrooms, some campuses have smaller classrooms. And so they have discretion with a lot of that. Sixth through twelfth grade students basically have the schedule that they picked in the spring. And they will switch classes just like they do in the spring or just like they do, they would normally. Everybody will be required to wear a mask. So you go, okay, well, let's talk about that. In our classes, we don't feel we can guarantee six feet. So therefore, students will be closer than six feet lots of times during the day and everyone's going to be required to wear a mask. The only way we would be able to do more than six feet is if half the students don't show up. If half the students choose the home option and half the students choose the face-to-face option, we might be able to get to six feet. But if they don't, we won't be able to do that. Therefore, that's the reason the masks are so essential, that everybody's wearing a mask for most of the day. Especially these students will have individual plans based on their individual IAPs on their campuses. If you choose, if you choose the remote option, which we know lots of parents will choose this option, we're going to have the exact same content that is covered in the classroom will be covered online. In other words, synchronous instruction is going to happen from third grade through twelfth grade. Students will be watching their teachers and their classrooms as much as possible all day long. If you're a seventh grader, you're going to start at seven forty-five and you're going to go to your first period class online and then you go to your second period class online. Again, the specifics of that are going to be determined based on numbers. How many students are choosing the face-to-face and how many are choosing the remote instruction option? So if there are, say, twenty students in the classroom and fifteen students are face-to-face, five students will be online and they'll go through their classes just like they do every other day if others be doing so virtually. Students choosing the remote option will be responsible for logging into their classroom and turning in all their assignments with Google Classroom. You're going to have to have a device that allows you to get video feeds like we're doing here right now. And you'll have to have internet access in order to choose the at-home option. We do not have Wi-Fi MiFis to offer internet access to parents that don't have it. And so if you do not have internet access to start school, you're going to have to choose the face-to-face option and come to school. And so grades, class expectations for remote learners are exactly the same as grades for face-to-face students. And then again, you have to make a choice two weeks prior for school starting if you're going to choose the face-to-face or the remote option. And once you make that decision, if you're an elementary student, you'll be in that setting for at least nine weeks. And then in nine weeks, you can choose to change to the other one if you did not work successfully or did not like the one you started with. If you're a secondary student, you'll have six weeks of that instruction. And two weeks prior, two weeks prior to the end of the grading period, you'll have to make a decision whether you want to stick with that or if you'd like to change and go to the other one. And again, all of this is going to be contingent upon how the virus works, how it goes in our community, how it goes in our schools. And we'll be adjusting as we go. Elementary schools, communication's going to be key, because we really want to have that daily interaction with students and their teachers in, face-to-face obviously, but in the remote setting as well. And so parents are going to have a role in assisting their students to get online and work with their students and get online and work with their students' teachers and helping them. Students, they'll have assigned times for live instruction. So if you're three to five, third grade through fifth grade, you're going to have live instruction every day in front of your teacher. And then you'll have assignments to do just like you would if you were in class. Everything's going to be online. In other words, all the materials that you're needed either will be sent home to you. If we have to send home a paper copy of something, that will be sent home. Otherwise, it'll be live. So if I'm a teacher and I'm reading a book to students and I have a physical book in my hand, the online version might have a YouTube video of that same book being read to you. You know, so there's going to be some difference, but for the most part, it's going to be the same materials. Some activities have to be done independently, because if you're at home, you're just not going to have that independent work time. And we get that. And then again, the number of students choosing face-to-face versus remote will determine some of these models that we might use. And I have three examples. These are not the ones we're going with. We might use a blend of these. But these are just things that parents can think about. Hmm, it might look like this or it might not. It depends upon the number of students. So one option for elementary, which would be a face-to-face asynchronous for pre-K to two and then synchronous for three to five. So in other words, third through fifth grade teachers will deliver instruction face-to-face while students are streaming live to virtual students. Every day, all day long, eight-thirty, eight-fifteen to three-thirty-five, whatever the time is during the day, they will be online at the same time. Or if you're a pre-K to two student, you will have a synchronous period at some point in time during the day, maybe a thirty or forty-five minute time period where you can visit with your teacher live. Otherwise, you will have videos or you'll have online assignments where you'll be able to complete those at your own pace, because they're pre-K to two students. That's really hard to ask a pre-K student or a kindergarten student to sit in front of a screen all day long. So we're not doing that. They would just have a brief period of time. Whenever they will meet with their teacher, the rest of the time will be on their own and they'll have assignments to complete on a regular basis. And again, that's where that parent component comes in. There's going to be a big parent component if you choose to do the at-home option. Another option is an asynchronous blend, where students will be scheduled with one teacher in pre-K to two. Students will still be departmentalized in three to five, but they'll deliver instruction. You'll have like core instruction for a period of time in the morning for pre-K to two. And in the afternoon, you'd have specials. In other words, specials would be a blend of art, P, music, library time, and then enrichment activities and their core content areas. But that would be done asynchronously. And then the synchronous part would be the morning instruction part. And then it would flip. Third grade to fifth grade is doing morning specials and enrichment activities and then have core instruction from their teachers in the afternoon. And so that's a little bit different kind of schedule. And it just depends upon, again, the number of students, because if you have, in this type of setting, teachers will have a pretty dedicated time to be able to spend online synchronously with their at-home students, where in a pure synchronous model, their students are getting instruction along with everybody else in the classroom and they're answering questions as they go with those students. They wouldn't necessarily have that one-on-one time. Another option would be a synchronous blend. And you have a homeroom teacher, but these teachers rotate throughout the day. In other words, you'd have different homeroom teacher, you have the same homeroom teacher, but you go from class to class, kind of like departmentalize. You'd have somebody teaching your reading and somebody else teaching math and somebody else doing the science and social studies. And one teacher every day would be doing all the virtual students by themselves. And then the next day, another teacher would be doing all the virtual students. So if you have four third grade teachers, you'd have a different virtual teacher every day. And then you'd have your same, but those other teachers would be rotating amongst the other students that are face-to-face. And so it's just, it's a different way to manage this based on the number of students that we have that are virtual versus face-to-face. And then secondary, so those are just options. It might be one of those, it might be a combination of those. It's all going to be, each individual campus, whenever we get numbers in, we'll be looking at that and figuring out what's going to be the best way to move forward as far as face-to-face synchronous and asynchronous instruction. Secondary, they'll have the option for face-to-face or remote, just like everybody else. But it will be synchronous throughout the day. In other words, high school and middle school students will get online at seven forty-five when school starts and go through their classes just like they would every day. Don't need to log in, don't need to be face-to-face, no avatars. We want to see your face throughout the entire period. That's how you'll gain attendance, that's how you'll get credit for being there. And you'll have the exact same content instruction as everybody else. And assignments and assessments, grading practices will all be the same for everybody. So I'm sure there's lots of questions related to that. And I'd like to answer any health questions or safety questions if you have those as well. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And then, so I can see everybody, because it's hard for me to see when I have my.
I have a question.
Mr. Payton up first, if you don't mind. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to the plan. And that summary, there was a lot in there that helped me understand a little bit more about what's going on. And I guess my question's after reading the plan that was sent out late last night, which is more parent-oriented, this one does that more about what the staff is doing. And that's where really most of my questions came. What are our expectations for teachers, both in elementary and secondary? And I think what I hear is, we don't really know yet because we don't know firm numbers and that's understood. But I want to be especially cognizant of any teachers, any educator to have health concerns. Are they going to be able to do something in the online model and be protected from as much exposure as possible?
So I guess my answer is yes. And depend upon how this works out, how many students we have, we'll have to look at our individual teachers and see what their individual issues are. And there are varied issues that are out there. And if we have the options about somebody who work remotely, if that works out, then yes, that would be a possibility. So it really just depends on their situation and how that has to be dealt with. We have, we have all the guidelines from the Department of Labor and TDA related to, related to that. And we'll have to work with individual teachers. But you can see in this model, we really don't have strictly at-home teachers as an option unless we have an inordinate amount of students that are staying at home. And if that's the case, then yes, we would have teachers that would probably work strictly virtual. And they would be able to work from a place in the building should they need to, that would be isolated if they need the internet access, computer access and everything here, because a lot of people don't have that function at home. So it just depends. I really don't have a solid answer for that right now, Mr. Payton.
Well, I understand, because there is a lot based on the numbers. And so that is, that is going to be known within the next week. I think we're giving parents that time to make that decision. And I think sticking with it for a given period is important as well, so that we're not in continual state of flux. Everything needs to be planned somewhat. Concerned that there's no paper option. I was, I read through the parent's survey and there were very, very high numbers of people of the respondents of the survey that said they have Wi-Fi access in the home. But you've got to wonder if the people who don't have Wi-Fi access were the ones who did, or take the survey. So anyway, I hear, and I'm glad there's some work being done to try and get some hotspots there that you mentioned earlier. But what about as we start? They're just going to have to be in class and that's the only option period?
That mean, paper options did not work well at all in the spring. It was, it was too much information. This would be all new instruction. A lot in the spring was reviewed. It was, it was less reverent. This is going to be full-blown, brand-new instruction for students. And not being able to get online with them and provide them with that, it was, it did not work well in the spring at all. And so yes, if you, as of right now, if you do not have internet access or reliable, you know, internet access and a reliable device at home to use, you would have to choose the face-to-face option.
And then I'll just wrap up on some others. Question, I think the main takeaway from this is this is a totally different model than what is, I think you've used the word triage was last spring. This is real education that could continue if the school gets locked down. You know, day six, all of a sudden we changed totally online. And those kind of things that this is really teaching via the web and not just kind of throwing some stuff out there and hoping it rescues cases.
Right, correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Licker?
Yes, thank you for listening. After reading last night and then getting up and reading more this morning, of course, the biggest thing in my mind, and this is living education for forty years plus, are the teachers, the staff, what's going on in all the schools. And just, you know, as Bob said, I had real concern about the paper options, because I know what happened in the past and I know how difficult that was for everybody concerned. I even went out and delivered papers one day. Didn't find anybody home. Had to, I mean, it took me like an hour to deliver one apartment of papers because I couldn't find where I was trying to get to. But I think there's so many things that go along with that. And I think as, as a parent, they have to understand that if they don't have the proper internet access and they can't get an attachment that's going to go along with the lesson that the teacher's teaching, then their best option is to send that kid to school. I mean, you know, I think that makes, that makes sense. And then my second concern is, as I was reading through this and looking at all of the options and everything that could possibly be happening, understanding that, you know, they're all very viable options, that the question that kept popping up in my mind is, do we have any administrators in the district that we're not sure about as far as to be able to carry out a plan, their plan? Because you can't compare Fowler and Burt T. Washington. I mean, it's been no difference with the number of kids that want to come to school and the number of kids that want virtual. And there's so many things in there. So my plea, and what I would say is, as a former principal, is give this plan to those administrators and let them run with it and do what they need to do. Let us trust that they're going to do what they need to do. They're building to do the very best job for their students. Because it can't just be, we're going to do this and make everybody do the same thing. And like, you know that, I'm preaching to the choir, but I want the other board, I just want to say this for the other board members, because we can come up with the best plan in the world, but it may not work in some of our schools. So give some freedom and some flexibility to the school, the individual schools, to say, this is what we're going to do, because this is what works best for our campus. That's the way it used to be. And I just think that we need to be very understanding that not everybody's going to be doing exactly the same thing, because it doesn't work that way on everyone else.
I totally appreciate that. And we've had all of our administrators, principals, assistant principals, curriculum staff, directors, for the last three days. And that's what we've been doing for the last three days, is brainstorming, how does this work? How does this look in your world? They, they got into figuring out bathrooms and saying, okay, if we do one-to-one bathroom, who's going to be the person watching the bathroom? Who's going to be the person at the back door as students are dropped off in the bus lane? Where are those students going to go? How are they going to be seated when they get, you know? And so, yes, sir, every campus is so different and has different limitations. Stairwells, is there a hallway going? This stairwell is just an upstairs well. And so that way you can use both sides and you can touch the handrails, especially if you're at, say, Sunday and you have young students trying to go up and downstairs, which there are really small students going up and downstairs at Sunday. And then figuring out throughout the day how often we're cleaning that stairwell and sanitizing that. And that ways, we have sanitizing stations in the common areas. So that way, when students walk So that way, when students walk from here to there, we know they're going to have to touch stuff. As soon as they get there, they're going to be able to sanitize their hands. Yes, sir.
Well, we've got, you know, there's so many new hoops that they're going to have to jump through this year. And so we've complicated their job a lot, and now we've made the hoops even smaller. So they're going to be more difficult to jump through. And I just think there's going to be a lot of grace there because it's, I just can't even imagine. It's going to be tough for them, and kudos to what you guys are trying to work out to help them out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Licker.
Let me add a very team.
Well, first of all, I really appreciate us making an effort to start August 20. I think the public wants that, and I think it's time to get our kids back in school. And I know we have the option to push things back, but I am, with many others, I think that agree that it's time to go back. So I appreciate y'all making that happen. I agree that making the change at grading periods is obviously very logical and is going to kind of give us a little steady footing for a while. The, just a couple of clarifications. Face masks, you discussed several times, but face shields will also be correct?
Yes, correct. So what we're looking, yeah, Mr. Griffiths is modeling the face shield. We have lots of different options, but this is one that really seems to be a pretty popular one that a lot of people like because it's lightweight and it's easy to use and you can wear it over your glasses and everything else. We think, and there's different thoughts on this, but we think you can instruct and help kids understand and get to a point where first graders and above can wear face masks all the time. And that's, I know that's below the 10-year-old glove shouldn't have to. Well, no, there's nothing that says they can't. We're not saying it's a, it's going to be a major discipline issue. If you're a first grader, you're refusing to wear your mask or you're not wearing your mask. But we think that's a very teachable one in teaching good hygiene skills because we're going to teach them how to wash their hands. We're going to teach them not to touch their face and put their hands in their mouths whenever they're, you know, doing things that are just healthy. And we think face mask wearing is one of those things we can teach. We also think we can teach that to three-year-olds and four-year-olds. But doesn't mean it's going to happen all the time. But our older students are definitely going to have face masks and are going to have to wear them all day, every day. That's, except in an area where they can, where they're outside and they can get six feet apart.
And are you saying kids are not, students are not allowed to wear face shields?
Yes, shields or masks, either one.
Okay, then Chromebooks. Will Chromebooks be given to all middle school and high school kids?
Yes.
Okay, like we did last year, but not to elementary students, correct?
So to begin with, no, because we want students that don't have internet access at school because we need to teach them all how to use, and that's our biggest issue we learned in the spring with the Chromebooks is not all our students knew how to use Google Classroom efficiently. Because you'll remember some of the comments were, my student finished his assignments in two hours. And another one was, this is ridiculous, they can't finish all their work. And the only thing we can attribute that to is not knowing how to get around Google Classroom and find stuff and complete assignments online. And so we need to do a lot of instruction online. And so to begin with, students, elementary students, if they're locked down, will not have Chromebooks issued to them. We do have enough for everyone to have one, but they won't be issued to them. But all day long, they will be using a Chromebook. So that way, this class tomorrow has to quarantine for 14 days. All students will be sent home with a Chromebook. And hopefully by then, by the time that happens, we'll have some Wi-Fi's and we'll know exactly who doesn't have internet access and we'll send them home with a Chromebook and a Wi-Fi.
And you're talking elementary kids in this case?
Yeah, right, right. Secondary kids will have Chromebooks already issued to them.
Okay, great. And then, do you know what percentage of our teachers feel as though they have a health concern and going, or a pre-existing condition?
No, ma'am, not yet. We also plan to survey teachers and find out campus to campus what our teacher needs are going to be and see what adjustments we're going to have to make on that. But no, ma'am, we do not yet.
And is that something, as Mark was talking about, campus decision-making with our principals? Is that something that principals will have a say in how they can assign teachers to whether it's face-to-face or internet that say, a, the principal knows if she has a teacher who has some concerns and maybe she could let that, or he could let that teacher be an online teacher? Will they have that flexibility or is there going to be just a blanket policy?
Well, no, no, that would definitely be a principal decision. And the hard part is figuring out how this works. So let's just say I have, let's just use easy numbers, 80 students in a grade level. So that means I have four classes of students at 20 apiece. If 20 students in fourth grade choose to stay home out of that grade level, that means you could have three teachers teaching face-to-face, 20 students in a class, and you can have one teacher solely online with the other 20 students that are at home. At the ninth grade period, if 10 more students go home, now you have one teacher teaching 30 students online or you're going to have to have some combination of one of those other teachers teaching the students synchronously, face-to-face and at home. Because we still have 22 to 1 ratios from fourth grade on down. And so if we only have five students in a grade level that are staying at home out of 80 students, that means every class would have one or two students that could be online with everybody else in person, and there wouldn't be an online option then for that grade level. Well, if that teacher's certified to teach something else, maybe there's another option there. So it just depends.
And in that case, let's say the 80 kids, the 4, 20 don't come, so there'll be one online teacher and three in class. Principal will have the option to say, I want two teachers to share the online duty, and they will go back and forth to that one classroom. So the principal will have some options. The plans, the options you showed, 1, 2, and 3, are those all acceptable options that the teachers will, meaning the principals will have the right to choose for their campus?
And they might not choose any of those, it might be something completely different. Or it could be a blend of 1 and 2, or 2 and 3, or it could be a blend of all those. It just depends upon their grade level and the certification of teachers.
But we're going to let the campuses have flexibility, have to.
They have to, yes.
Love that comment, Mike.
Another part of that is, let's say one campus has, I don't know, 50% of their students stay home. Another campus has 10% of their students stay home. If those two campuses are close to each other, it sure would be nice to share space. Because one campus is going to be really empty and one campus is going to be pretty full. It'd be nice to share space. So we might have to come up with a way for those two campuses to share classroom space. And so it, we'll see. That's the answer.
And I'm just about finished, so I apologize, but just.
No problem. You have questions, everybody else does too.
The, it sounded to me like when you were saying the pre-K through second grade, if those people are staying home, they are only going to have a small amount of time on the computer with their teacher. And it seems like those kids are the kids who need the most amount of time on face-to-face with their teacher online. And so why would, why would we cut their time down and not have that teacher with them just like they are in the classroom?
Well, that, so that depends upon the number of students that they're working with. If half their students are in face-to-face, and if they have a class of, say, 18 students, and nine are at home and nine are face-to-face, then during my center time, if the parent's able, okay, so the rule is, we can't make you do synchronous instruction if you're pre-kated to. We have to allow an asynchronous option. In other words, sometimes parents can't work with their child in the mornings at 8 o'clock whenever the teacher starts teaching because the parent is at work and the child is at grandmother's house during the day for daycare. And then the parent gets home at night. So there's, we can't make you get online, pre-kated to, synchronously with your teacher. We have to offer.
Is that from TDA?
Yeah, right, that's a TDA rule. Pre-kated to has to be asynchronous. So what will happen then is, using that example, if nine students are face-to-face and nine students are online, and they all happen to be online during the class whenever the teacher's teaching, the students are used to doing centers and they rotate from center to center and the teacher has a group at her table. And so she's working with a group face-to-face for 10 minutes, and then they rotate, and now she has a group of face-to-face online students for 10 minutes. And then they rotate again. Again, that's the reason the parent component for our online pre-kated to is going to be pretty heavy. And the more parent involvement you have, the more synchronous time they'll probably have. Otherwise, we would schedule time with that parent or with a group of parents and say, okay, your teacher can be online at 2 o'clock if that time works for you. And we, because we're going to have to give teachers an opportunity to have dedicated time to be online with their at-home students if they're doing an asynchronous model and not teaching all the students at the same time. So pre-kated to is pretty problematic if you choose to stay home. Unless you have parents that have a lot of flexibility and can do that.
Just one more question from me. What's the protocol for exposure once a child or someone has been exposed in a classroom? What happens to that classroom?
So if a student has symptoms, if they have symptoms of COVID, which is the same symptoms for the flu, the same symptoms for Stryp, if a student has symptoms, they will be, our teachers are going to get a lot of training upfront from our school nurses on how to recognize symptoms and CDs and be hyper-aware of what symptoms we're looking for. If a student has symptoms, they will be sent to the nurse's office immediately. And depending upon what happens, we might at that point in time create a classroom and ask the custodians to come in and do a quick clean before students come back into the classroom. The student that is sent to the nurse, on all of our campuses, we're going to have to have quarantine areas for students that are symptomatic on their way home. In other words, if you're symptomatic, you will be sent to the nurse, you will be kept in an isolated area, and your parents will have an hour to come get you. Or if you can drive yourself, you'll be able to check yourself out and go home. And you'll have, parents will have to come get their students. If a student tests positive, at that point, basically, the health department is going to be involved. And the health department would do their contact tracing and everything else, and we'll have to, you know, help them with all that to determine if other students have been exposed and if they need to quarantine as well. If you have to quarantine, you'll be face-to-face today, you'll be quarantined at home tomorrow, remote. And you'll have your Chromebook with you, and you'll just get online and continue instruction. Should you, if you're able, unless you're too sick to do that, obviously you won't, but if you're able. And you will quarantine. And the rule is, you have to be, it has to be 10 days after a positive diagnosis and 72 hours after symptoms have diminished and you're fever-free. If you have symptoms and go home and you're tested and it's negative, or you go to the doctor and you have an alternate diagnosis. No, it's not COVID, it's Stryp. Okay, great. You stay home for two or three days until you get over Stryp, you're fever-free, and you come back to school. So it's all going to be contingent upon the individual student, what they have. And then it's going to, and then we'll work with the health department to determine if there's going to be multiple students or multiple people involved in quarantine. And that has to do with close contact. And close contact was basically, and I think it was just redefined by the CDC. And so we'll see how our local health department addresses that. But it's, TDA's version of that is, within six feet of somebody for more than 15 minutes without a mask on is considered close contact. And so if you have a mask on and you're not in close contact with somebody, I guess technically you would not be quarantined maybe. But it's just going to depend upon the situation and the case.
Great, thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. And again, I really appreciate the August 20th start date.
Thank you. So one thing with that, that is a big driver, is we still have the requirement for 75,600 minutes. And so as soon as we can get in and start offering instruction, those minutes are ticking off. The longer we delay, if we have to, then we're going to go longer into the school year. We'll break into holidays or things like that. And so we do have one option on a campus. If a campus really has a spike, in other words, a bunch of students are becoming positive or testing positive from a campus, we have the ability to close the campus for up to five days, to sterilize and make adjustments to schedules or something else if we have to. And so we'll be looking at that as well if we have a big outbreak on campus. But that's the only, but we have to be back, we're only allowed to do five days of remote instruction for everybody before we have to get back to offering the face-to-face instruction.
Do we have any other questions or comments for board members?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Payton.
Okay, let's turn a little bit more to the technology side.
Yes, sir.
We've talked about one at home, but I'm a little concerned about the bandwidth and the capabilities. If all of a sudden a school has, one of our high schools, I don't know how many classrooms we've got in the building, but all of them trying to do synchronous classroom Google meets at the same time with, I don't know how many kids log in there. So Chad, thanks for popping in there. Are we, I'm sure you're not expecting a meltdown, but can you give us some reassurance? Have we got the bandwidth to make this happen?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We've been planning with this for the last, golly, almost 10 years. But for sure, the last five years, we should, we should be good to go other than, you know, some sort of major malfunction. But we've built redundancies into the network, into the schools, we should be good.
What's the largest spike you've ever seen Chad in usage this far?
I mean, we've run to above 2 gig total bandwidth, you know, somewhere around Christmas time when they've been known to watch a lot of videos and they're killing time before, you know, between files and stuff. But, I mean, currently, we have two 4-gig pipes that we can run out of. And so like I said, we've got a little room to grow there.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Pardon, I just, I want to commend everybody who's worked so hard for so long to put this plan together, and the document that we received was the detailed flowchart explaining how things will work if there's a positive diagnosis. It's all really very clearly lined out, I think, and hopefully parents will take the time to read it carefully and feel assured that we're doing everything we can to protect their students. And I hope the staff will realize that the same is true on that end as well. As you've said over and over again, we have to be flexible and nimble. And I think this plan and instructional methods you outlined today allowed us to do that and react and respond on a campus-by-campus basis as we go through the year and see how things play out. Thank you all. I know this has been a lot of very hard work. And I'm really grateful to the community members and all the volunteers who participated in the process and helped develop such a detailed and well-thought-out plan. Great job.
All of us have, it's been a tough week working through these things and getting there and just, you know, long hours, but they've been great. I want to give a shout out to Ashley Thomas. She's the one that took all the notes and she's the one that formatted all the document that you saw and came up with the road, the road back to school plan, idea. And it's really, words spent it all very well for us and put our thinking into pretty concrete words like that. So Ashley believes in a great job this whole time with this.
I don't know if she's on here, but thank you, Ashley, I would say.
She is, she might be in her office, I'm not sure.
And I just want to reiterate publicly that masks are going to be so key to allowing us to keep students in school. And just want to encourage parents to get their students ready for that now so that come August 20th, it's not such a big deal. I think that's so critical.
We have the ability to have. We have the ability to have some masks if a student forgets theirs, or if it breaks during the day or something like that. We have some disposable masks available, obviously. It is on the school supply list. The recommendation is that you buy five reusable masks. So that way you can wear one every day and wash them and be ready to go the next week. Because taking them home and washing them is gonna be key also to keeping them clean and keeping the virus contained, I guess. You don't wanna wear the same masks day after day and not have it cleaned. So the recommendation would be to get five. And we have lots of vendors in town and elsewhere that are offering these masks, so.
Great, thanks, it sounds wonderful.
Oh, the WFIC Foundation has a site also. There's, through the WFIC Foundation, students and parents can go purchase masks. And I believe they're $5 apiece, and it might be, $5 apiece and four for, wait, $5 apiece and five of them for $20. So they can get that through the foundation, their WFIC logo and masks, so.
Great. Mr. Page, I think you have a question.
Yeah, personally, I think, you know, board members wanted to make sure that we had, because we get a lot of questions from the public, but I think our teachers and all are going to too. So are we gonna be able to get this into the hands of all the staff ahead of that public release so that they've got a chance to look it over, ask them some questions intelligently?
We're gonna be making edits, more edits today to the document. And as soon as we have the document done, yes, we'll be able to email that out to staff. And it'll be posted on our website. It'll be posted on our Facebook page and everything else as well. But yes, sir, tomorrow's the day we're releasing it to the public.
Mrs. McGregor?
Yes, I have a question. How are we going to, you said we're gonna be asking parents to make their choice? How are they gonna make that choice?
They will receive an email from us, or they will be able to go online and go to, it's a Google form. And they'll enter their information, their child's information, their school, and basically check yes or no, or gone, remote, or gone, face-to-face. And then also a transportation option there as well. Eligible students, obviously, can always ride a WFIC bus. We're gonna ask parents to take their child to school or allow them to walk if at all possible. Just because the less students we put on a bus, the better it's gonna be. It's okay to open up windows in the mornings when it's fairly cool, but in the afternoons, it sure is hot. And it would be tough to open up all the windows on a bus in the afternoon, whenever we have, you know, air-conditioned buses. And so especially in August and September, that's just really, really tough. If you have an hour-long or 45-minute-long bus ride that's not air-conditioned because all the windows are open. So we want as many parents as possible to take their children or allow them to, you know, come up with another way to get to school besides riding the bus. But bus will still be an option for eligible students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurt. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Mr. Luper had a question.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Luper, go ahead.
You're muted, Mark.
I unmuted myself, but it is. I just saw Scott Hafley's name pop up. I just, can you just give us a quick update on what we're doing with all of those points and everything? Because I get a lot of questions about that, and I don't have any idea.
For sure. Coach Hafley, are you open to?
Yes, sir. I've got a, I wrote some notes for you, for all of you, to just kind of review with you. There's been a, a lot of information that's come out from T E A and U I L just over the last week. And so, you know, let me just start by expressing my gratitude to our coaches, parents, and athletes. They provided tremendous cooperation this summer with our online check-in system. We've had very few issues. We've had to keep some coaches home from workouts when they thought they were exposed, and they were great with that. We had kids who'd been exposed at a family gathering, and their parents kept them home for the required amount of time. So that, we've been very fortunate this summer. We haven't had any kids who've tested positive due to exposure in any of our workouts. So we're very.
Scott, real quick, Scott.
Sure.
I think what he just said, we can't say enough. It's gonna be just so essential for parents and for staff members, everybody involved, to be well, just to be so in tune with your body and know if you feel sick, know if you have symptoms, and just to stay home. Our students are gonna be able to get online synchronously and not be counted absent. If you're sick, stay home, get online, and do school all day online. That's fine. We can make that work. We can't make work if we have a lot of students coming to school that are sick and we're having, and we have a big outbreak. And so I appreciate you saying that, Scott, because it's gonna be a lot on the parents and students and staff members to just be self-aware and be considerate of everybody else and just please don't come to school if you're sick. Go ahead, Scott.
Sure. In the weekly board report that you'll get, I've included, we have a document now that combines all the U I L and T E A health guidelines in regards to COVID-19. So you'll be able to see that. That will be posted on the athletic website and throughout all the athletic areas at the six secondary campuses. The basic highlights of that document is just the commitment to an increase in clean. Brady Woolsey and Stacy Gould will be meeting with the campus coordinators next week, reviewing all the practice schedules for volleyball and football, making sure the locker rooms stay sanitized, continuing the online health check-ins for any student-athlete that chooses to learn at home and any student-athlete that's practicing prior to the first day of school. Those online check-ins continue. And then the one that's probably maybe the greatest challenge for our coaches right now is a entry-and-exit plan for their locker rooms that includes social distancing while you're dressing out for practice. So, you know, our buildings are older, our locker rooms are smaller. And you can imagine the problem with trying to get 75 to 150 kids dressed out for a football practice while maintaining six feet of social distance. But those are the challenges that our coaches are working through right now. And, you know, we sent out a calculator yesterday where they can calculate the square footage of a locker room. You know, if you can get 25 kids in and that every time one kid walks out, the next kid walks in. And, you know, I think the big push for all of us is that our kids wear masks while they're getting dressed. They don't talk, and we just get in and out as quickly and as safely as we can. So our coaches are working through all those plans right now. And we'll be having multiple parent meetings, online, in-person, where we go over those plans with all of our parents. The big news from the U I L, of course, with the division split. So 1A through 4A schools, we start next week. Our Hershey coaches are working long hours this week to get prepared and make sure that all these entry-and-exit plans are ready for the kids. The 5A and 6A schools, we don't start until September 7th. And of course, that created a scheduling problem. So last week, we went out, we found new volleyball and football opponents. And then the attorney general's decision yesterday changed what the Tarrant County schools can do, which is where most of our games were at, for Wichita Falls High and for Rider. So now those schools want us to put them back on our schedule. So you guys get the idea of the roller coaster of going back and forth, trying to, you know, commit to a game and change the game, and then, you know, do you give up your new opponent and go back to your original? So we're all working through that. Middle schools are still on schedule to start the first day of school. I spend quite a bit of time with Sonny Cruz and Graham. He's the district chair. And for all of our middle schools that we play, we're working together to develop plans for how we're gonna get parents into the games to see the middle school events, understand that we're gonna be limited to 50% capacity. So, you know, if we're playing a game at the Barwise Gym, you're only gonna have a couple hundred people who can go in. And so we're gonna have to limit that to the parents of the participants. We're gonna do our best to move some middle school volleyball games to the high school gyms. But there's a lot of moving parts of that because now you may be dropping off a group of middle school students before the high school day has even finished, and they're staying there in the gym. So there's a lot of things that our administrators and coaches have to work through to make sure we're doing all of those things very safely. Probably the most awkward piece of this is that our middle schools will all be playing football before Wichita Falls High and Rider ever take the field. And so, you know, that's a strange component to look at for us, but that's what we've been given and that's what we're gonna continue to deal with. On travel, all tournaments have been canceled for the year. So no teams will be staying overnight. And we went in and let our tennis and golf coaches know that, you know, those sports stay overnight a lot. But right now, the consequences just outweigh the benefits. And so we're not gonna have any overnight travel currently. You know, we're going to, we've created an online system, and I gotta thank Frank Murray, because he's my go-to guy for the online forums. We're gonna set up a system where parents now have the opportunity to transport their kids to and from games so that they don't have to ride the bus if they don't feel comfortable doing that. And, you know, they'll still be, the parents will still be required to come and sign their kids out with the coach. But we're gonna let them check in online and try to ask them to do that 24 hours before the day of the game so our coaches can make preparations. And, you know, I can't, again, I can't say enough, our coaches have been super flexible, and I'm really pleased. And, you know, what we keep talking about is not winning games, but just winning kids. We may only be around our kids for a few weeks, a few months, we don't know. So whenever we're around them, we just wanna win the kids and give them the best experience we possibly can. So if you've got specific questions, I'll tell you everything I know. But believe me, everything I know today is a lot different than what I knew two days ago.
Coach Hafley, I typed in my question, but I'll just ask it. So you talked about the football teams traveling for out-of-town games, no overnight stays. Will band ensure traveling with them as well?
So right now, what we're doing is each of our district executive committees are meeting. And the superintendents and athletic directors and fine arts directors are trying to determine if bands will travel to away games. There's, everybody wants everyone to travel. But for example, in our 5A districts, you know, that's a lot of kids on very few buses on some really long rides. And so one of the things that we've talked about, and a decision has not been made, to answer your question, is the, only the home band will play until we go back to 100% capacity. And what that will allow some of the schools with smaller stadiums to do is put the home band on a visitor's sign and sell more seats to the local community. So we may follow a policy like that. What's gonna be tough for Wichita Falls is because we have a 4A school and two 5As, we may have two different set of rules that we're following for our band. And so I'll try to bridge that gap between our districts as best as we possibly can. So whenever we're playing at Memorial Stadium, it looks and feels the same, whether it's a 4A or a 5A game.
Thank you. Mr. Kurt, I know in the plan, it talks about performing arts and fine arts and some of the rules for social distancing and that sort of thing. At a later date, or maybe in a Friday report, could we get some information from Kelly Serinski on how our fine arts are gonna manage to conduct classes and instruction and performances and rehearsals, given circumstances?
For sure, yes.
Thank you, that'd be great.
May I ask one more question? Scott, I've been asking of you about traveling on the buses, but I think you addressed it. But, Mr. Kurt, can you address bus traveling to the C E C? And if we are gonna be taking, I'm sorry for cutting Scott's time, but he answered that question for me. So, but it also raises the C E C question. And I assume we will want parents to take their kids as possible, but are we still going to be maintaining that consistently?
Yes, we will still have, we will still have shuttles running every day to the C E C and back to campuses, just like we normally do, because that's an essential function for us. Talking with Durham, two to a seat is gonna be a pretty normal thing. Now, when you get to high school, a lot of times, they're not that quite as crowded on some of those shuttle buses, but sometimes they are. And we're gonna look at that and see if there's ways to add some more routes there in the middle of the day to make that less crowded. But yes, we will still be taking students back and forth from high schools to the C E C.
Thank you, Coach Hafley. Does anybody else have any other questions? Mr. Kurt, anything else you wanna add?
I don't think so. I know there are coaches, and I just reiterate what Coach Hafley said, that all of our extracurricular coaches, sponsors, everybody, they've done a great job of implementing stuff with students this summer, which is nice to do, so when you have little smaller numbers and you can kind of work into that. But we've been, we've been working with health adaptations and social distancing now for a lot of months. And so we're getting better at it all the time. Summer school's going awesome. We have, you know, we've learned a lot through that process. Our summer school staff briefed the whole group on what they learned, lessons learned from summer school, so that was good as well. So that's about it.
Great. Well, once again, thanks to everybody for all the hard work and the continued work to make this all successful for our students and our schools.